Welcome to the Commissioners Meeting. Shall we rise to the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a regular session of Fayette County Commissioners. If you would be so kind to have a cell phone to silence it or put it on vibrate, I'd appreciate it. First order of business are our minutes from the previous meeting.
I make a motion to accept them as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second to accept our minutes as presented. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We also have the minutes from our special session on July 8th in reference to our 911 contract discussing the highway floor. And there was another matter. Do I hear a motion on those?
I make a motion to accept the special meeting minutes as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second to accept the minutes of the special meeting on July 8th. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Department reports, Mr. Quorum. Okay, he'll be back. I sent him on the air. Mr. Gray.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have one proposal. We've been working on this Cayman boiler at the jail. It's been down for about two months. We had to get the flue put back together. Some check valves inside the unit that wasn't running. We finally did get that part of it done. Now we've got a gas valve that's completely out. We've got a proposal from Johnson's to replace the gas valve at $3,847. And they have to tear the machine completely down, completely apart to put the gas valve in. We're running on backup now. And if it goes down, we have no hot water to deal with at all.
It's got to be done.
It's got to be done. It's an $11,000 heater if you try to replace it. And it's about eight years old. We need to put this gas valve in.
Any questions to Mr. Gray?
Motion to approve.
Second.
For $3,847 for Johnson Controls.
I have a motion and a second to approve this proposal from Johnson Controls, who is, by the way, a company that the county has contracted with for this type of stuff. The amount is $3,847 even. Is there any question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Also, along that line, yesterday I met with two representatives from Johnson Controls and Mr. Gray. And they simply wanted to see if they could solicit business, and that's fine. But they may, in the long run, wind up saving us money. What it simply is, they will come in and for free, they will do a comprehensive study of our energy usage in all of the county buildings. If there is a savings to be had by way of, and correct me if I mistake this bill, but if there are savings to be had by way of new this, new that, whatever, okay, then that savings will actually fund the project to replace equipment that needs to be replaced so that you can have the energy savings. Their administrative costs, their profit, all comes out of that. They also, which is rather unusual, if they, and I'll assign an arbitrary number to this, if they say you're going to have a savings of 10 and your savings is actually only an 8, they will write us a check for the difference between 8 and 10. So that's the way I'm looking at it. That's putting your money where your mouth is. But the survey, we don't know yet if that is even possible. So the survey, they will come in and do a comprehensive study, is free. And so I went ahead and authorized them to come and do the study since it is free, but we have made no commitments. Is that accurate how I quoted it?
Yeah.
Because I'm not a mechanical expert.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any questions? Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Sheriff?
I have a 144 for a jail officer position. Yesterday morning, I had one of our jail officers resign from his position. I was lucky enough to have someone to hire immediately, which would be Justin Gray. Justin left our department a few months ago to pursue a better opportunity. I always encourage our jailers, if they can better themselves, to do that. Decided it wasn't for him and was available to come back. Left under great circumstances. Was a tremendous jail officer during his time there. Very polite, very intelligent young man. Has a degree from Vincent's University and was an asset to our department. Would like for him to do that again. So I would like to hire Justin Gray into our open jail officer position.
The sheriff called me yesterday and he needed him to start last night, so I went ahead and located that. Since he's a former employee and he has the sheriff's recommendation and due to the manpower requirements, I didn't think that would be a problem. Need a motion to approve?
Yes.
Motion to approve the 144?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the 144 for Jason Gray.
Justin.
Excuse me, Justin Gray. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sheriff. Mr. King?
Morning.
Good morning.
I don't have a whole lot to do. I got one quote back on cameras for the animal shelter. I've called a different company to come and give us a preparing one, but the current quote is from CEI here in town. I believe it's around $2,800 for a camera system to cover the animal shelter up there. But like I said, I'm waiting for that second quote to come in. The main thing I need to get approved this morning is, when I first started two years ago, we had a stack of computers that would move down to the basement. I've had Mike going through those and evaluating whether or not they're usable. It's pretty much boiled down to can they run Windows 7 or not? Most of the ones that we took down there cannot run Windows 7 or be usable for any other purpose. So he's been stripping them down, taking out parts that we can possibly reuse. So I have about 15 computer towers. Pretty much just the case and the motherboard and the processor that I want to take out and get rid of. I just need approval for that to take them out to the transfer station and get them recycled. But I've kept everything out of them that we can. I've got the hard drives that we can use or blank.
So since it's not something we want to sell, Mr. Baker, that's perfectly okay, isn't it? Just make sure that the property numbers don't get reported to the auditorium.
I'll do that.
Michael, if you could, make sure you call Tom Creach. If you're going to take a bunch in one, just let him know you're coming.
Yeah.
That way he can accommodate you.
Yeah. No problem.
Any other questions? I don't think we need a motion for that. Just go ahead. There's no one objecting, so it'll be all right.
Is there any questions for me on things going on?
Just keep doing what you do.
Today makes two years that I've been the IT Director, so.
Oh, yes, there is something.
Congratulations.
Happy anniversary.
The one thing that Commissioners and I have discussed off and on for the past few months is whether or not Mr. King and Mr. Quorum are Highway Superintendent. Mr. Quorum has a contract with us. He is a contract employee. That contract is due to expire August 7th, I think. And I had Mr. Baker look at this contract. He feels this is a good contract, both for the employee and for the county. So having said that, the one question I have, Mr. Baker, is that with this new Department of Labor ruling for our appointed employees being entitled to overtime, would you recommend that be included in the contract? Or do you think it's necessary?
Even if it is not in the contract, it applies.
Okay. All right. Okay. Having said that, do you want to look at this again before you make a decision?
No, that was the only real question, was reviewing and salary changes, that kind of thing.
Okay. Well, having said that, if the Board is okay with it, I would entertain a motion for the approval, excuse me, the renewal of Richard Quorum's contract and for the approval of the contract with Michael King and give me the authorization to sign off on it, if that's okay.
I'll make a motion to give Frank the authority to go ahead and have them sign these contracts to renew Richard Quorum and add Michael King, our IT Director.
I second the one for Richard Quorum, and I abstain from voting on Michael since he's my grandson.
Having said that, I will second the motion for Mr. King. Is there any discussion? First, let's move on Mr. Quorum's. All those in favor, Mr. Quorum, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, three ayes. Now, Mr. King, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Abstain.
Aye. Two ayes, one abstention. Motion passes. Anything else?
Nope, that's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Baker?
Commissioner Jackson requested that we made a prepared ordinance requiring mediation and/or arbitration for dispute resolution. And you may have that before you, I'm not sure.
Yes, sir, we did.
For consideration. If you have any questions, feel free to ask. Otherwise, I just wanted to make them. The observation that this has been with is ready to go.
This is the ordinance in effect for anything in the future for any county Commissioners that would be here for any work that is done?
Yes. Yes. The one thing I want to bring in before I forget it, we probably should set a dollar amount because if you have a $3,000 contract and you go to arbitration, your arbitrator's going to cost you $10,000. And I'm picking arbitrary figures there. So we really should set a dollar figure whereby this kicks in. So do you agree, Mr. Baker?
I agree. After the "now therefore is ordained" and the statute, et cetera, it says when appropriate following language regarding dispute resolution regulations is to be included in contracts entered into by and between Fayette County and the other entities, which means you have to decide which contracts you want to include in and which you don't. If there are some that are of low value, I agree with you.
So you don't necessarily see a need to, in writing, set a dollar amount? It's just that whoever makes the decision should be aware of the fact that you don't want to spend more to resolve a problem than what the problem costs?
Yes, and also the type of contract and the likelihood of an issue arising. Various things might be taken into consideration.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Baker? What's the body's pleasure?
Motion to approve the ordinance. What is the ordinance number?
You have to get signed.
Oh, okay. All right. Motion to approve the requiring mediation and/or arbitration for disputes and resolution.
I have a motion to pass the ordinance requiring mediation and/or arbitration for dispute resolutions. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Our council representative is on his way to a doctor's appointment this morning, so he will not be here. Do you have any mail, Madam O'Conner? Any old business? I think probably what I'm about to say will come with our old business. Our, the infrastructure monies that were released by the state in May, that came in the form of two bills, House Bill 1001 and Senate Bill 203. 67, I was close. And a resolution is required on our part to apply for the matching monies. We are working on projects because the match criteria requires us to have actual projects, a mile of this road, half a mile of that road. Are you going to chip and seal? Are you going to use asphalt? What's your projected cost for that program, et cetera? So I think we're going to finalize the project today because we did get our Pacer report back, which was the comprehensive report with, I think, something like 100 photographs a minute and GIS information, et cetera. So it will probably be up to the council to decide whether we spend 75% of this or 100% of it. 25% of it from the Senate bill had to be put into a rainy day fund, a new rainy day fund. And given that information, it's going to make a decision. We need a decision from the council as to whether or not we're going to spend 100% of it or 25%. The city has opted to keep 25% back that in a rainy day fund, you can basically use it for almost anything. And they've opted to keep it back for purchase of equipment. I, my opinion is, and also before I go any further, there's also a projected programs that we are wanting to do four years out. So we have to have ideas as to what we want to do four years out from now. I, before we knew that this required the council's approval, we went about designing or choosing road projects based on spending 100%. I think you get more bang for your buck that way. But what's the Board's thinking on this? I've talked to each of you individually. But it's a council decision, but I would like to tell them that, hey, the Commissioners would like to go 100% or 75-25.
After looking at the Pacer report and seeing how bad our roads are, the more we use on them right now, the better off we're going to be down the road because they need to be repaired. And I don't think we had any over a five. And a 10 is good. And we had very few that were fives. And all the rest of them were fours, threes, and a lot of twos and ones. Thank goodness we didn't have any that were zero. So, but it was not good news.
Those roads were rated, as she said, from zero to 10. Zero is a wagon trail. 10 is a new road where they haven't cut the ribbon on it yet. Actually, probably, I'm going to guess, at least 80% of our roads are a five or below. And I guess what people may not know is Fayette County, as small as it is, has 382, 384 miles of roads in the county. The city has 70 or so, if I remember correctly.
76.
76, okay. So there's a lot of roads to maintain and the cost of materials and et cetera. Plus, we're working with the Highway Department that from 10, 15 years ago is down six men. So you have the same amount of work. And until these monies were released, less money. And so it's crunch time most of the time in addition to their other duties of mowing, storm damage, this, that, and the other.
So I would agree that we should spend the 100%.
You okay with that, Ms. King?
Yes.
Then when I get a chance to talk to the council, because they have a special meeting tomorrow, excuse me, Thursday at 6:00. Okay. Okay. Now I will pass on to them what this Board wants. Also, I would like to remind everybody that Thursday at 6:00, the Commissioners are having a special meeting. And that is for the purpose of considering raising the rate on our, it's called a CCD Fund, Cumulative Capital Development Fund. That's a, I won't say a catch-all. That's our huge fund from which we draw for capital improvement plans. God forbid a roof collapses that's not covered by insurance or our air conditioning system goes down or we decide to build a new building or anything like that. That is also the fund, quite frankly, from at least the last two years that the county has borrowed from to keep our cash flow steady, I guess is the way to put it, along with some other funds. Right now, we're at basically 2/3 of the cap, excuse me, 2/3 of the cap rate, the rate where it's capped at. And our consideration is whether or not we want to increase that. If we max it out, it would raise it by another third. And that would bring us in, give or take, $2,000, $3,000, another $50,000 a year into that fund. It doesn't sound like much. And when it comes to the individual, it's not much, but.
Every little bit helps.
Every little bit helps, correct. So that is, again, Thursday night, day after tomorrow, here in this room at 6:00 PM. Is there anyone here for 911? We, the county has decided, excuse me, the Commissioners have decided to sell the farm that we own, which is on Waterloo Road. It basically runs from the north end of Roberts Park up to Erie. We gave the city for a nature walk 7.8 acres, which leaves us around 142 acres. We have decided to sell that farm. Having said that, I called a couple of appraisers. Two local ones were not interested or didn't have the expertise or credentials in that area. So one did, Mr. Warren Taylor. And the surveyor gave me the name of a gentleman in Richmond who was so swamped, he couldn't get us a report until at least Labor Day. So he recommended a gentleman in Muncie by the name of Jay Allard, A-L-L-A-R-D-T. And I did call him and they are both interested. So we have someone local. We have someone out of town. And how that works, they will each appraise the property. And you take their appraisal for the property and you get to an average. And that's what your property is worth. Part of this land belongs, excuse me, actually is Riverbank. Maybe it'll be here tomorrow, maybe it won't. Maybe it'll be river tomorrow. But that land is a cash, we rent that out right now. It has beans in it. I would like to check and see if we have any harvestable timber. But hardwoods don't tend to grow along river bottoms that well. And while we may have some, the question is, do we have enough to even worry about and make a profit off of? So do I have any questions from the Board?
No.
Could I get an official approval of these two appraisers?
I make a motion that we accept these two appraisers.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve Mr. Jay Allard and Mr. Warren Taylor. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Mr. Young Business, be brought before the Board. Yes, I have not forgotten you. I'm sorry. I did forget you. He missed you. I got it right in front of you. No, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Just to short, just to keep you apprised of what's going on, you've probably seen in the paper and have heard, we have a deal in principle with Ivy Tech to remain in the current facility. And also, indications are that Work One will be joining them in that facility and possibly a couple of other not-for-profits. Our goal is to make that facility a one-stop workforce development center with Ivy Tech and Work One. And we see great things. And in concert with that, the school system, along with Ivy Tech, have put together a plan to increase and enhance the dual credit opportunities for CHS students. And with an agreement with Indiana Wesleyan, there are degree programs that students from Connersville can receive now and never leave now, can remain in Connersville. Huge opportunity for those who would like to pursue them at very, very low cost. If you look at the dual credits that were given last year to students before this program came about, Dr. Hodges told me last night that in monetary value to the dual credits that were given last year, it saved parents, moms and dads, about 3/4 of a million dollars. It's huge. So there are some good things happening. The new agreement that we're writing with Ivy Tech will allow them to stay in Connersville. They have every intention of remaining and, in fact, growing because of the new rent structure with EDG. And that's a good thing. On the industrial side of the complex that was gifted to us a month and 19 days ago, we are making some small improvements, securing the building a little better, getting it a little more presentable to show to interested parties. And we still do have some interested parties. And beyond that, and I'll end my spiel, we are eight emerging, not emerging, eight transitioning employee, potential employees away from being gold in our ACT Work Ready Community initiative. We are 98% complete on our goals. We need eight people to take work keys testing, which we feel we'll get this year. And that'll put us about a year ahead of our goal. June 2017 is when we had to be complete. So we'll finish about a year early. And then Fayette County will go gold. There are two gold counties in the state right now, Rush and Randolph. We expect to be the third. We're in a drag race between Henry County and Fayette, and we're seeing which one can get there first. So that's something that I share when I meet with site selectors, companies, property management companies that relocate businesses, is that we are doing things to increase and enhance and enrich our workforce with the ACT Work Ready Community along with what I've mentioned with Ivy Tech. Really puts us a couple of clicks above other communities in developing a workforce that would help employers want to come to Fayette County. So this is some of the parts and pieces that you have to put in place in order to attract businesses to your area. They just won't come on an abatement and a location. They want a workforce. It's a huge part of their equation to come to a different location. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions for me.
I would like to elaborate on some things you said. Many times, people don't understand why we haven't progressed any further than what we have. So I know you probably don't have the exact figure in your head. Give us a rough idea of how many communities nationwide are in our situation and how many are vying for how much in business?
There are. There are, my last count, there are thirty, thirty-six hundred counties or parishes vying for a company, a new employer, a relocation, a, an expansion. I mean, we are one of those thirty-six hundred counties. And I forget, the, the number of economic development corporations is higher than that, because some big municipalities in certain counties will have their own. So, it's an even higher number, you know, counterparts to our EDG. There are more than ninety-two in the state of Indiana. There's ninety-two counties, but there are more economic development corporations than ninety-two. So, it is a, I don't want to call it a feeding frenzy, but it basically is. It's, everybody is vying for the same prize, and doing their, their best to attract with incentives, abatements, TIF districts, cash, money, free land, all the above, to get people to come. It's, it's, it's that way everywhere. And it's something we just can't drop out of and say, we don't really like to do that. We don't want to give any abatements. We don't want to do a TIF district, because we just don't think we want to do that. We're kind of caught in a, in a position where, in order for us to attract, we have to play the game. And we, whether it's me in the seat or someone else, these are the things you have to do if you want to compete to attract a new company. And then that's part of the equation. The other part, not to just get on a tangent here, but retaining what we already have. I mean, to me, that's my biggest job, is retaining what we, what we already have.
Let, let me interrupt you.
Go ahead.
I hear, I hear criticism, and I'm trying to make this an education session.
Sure.
I hear criticism that we don't, we don't pay attention to our existing businesses. Is that true?
No, it's not. With the new mayor, it's given me a beautiful opportunity to go back into these businesses again with a new political leader, and sit down and ask, what can we do to guarantee your continuation, and what can we do to enhance that and increase it? You know, what do you need from us? The city, the county, EDG, and the chamber's doing a part of that, too. But we do probably more of it with a little more authority and, and with some dollars that we can help these companies that are in expansion mode really go forward. And then if they're threatened, and the best example I can think of is a couple of years ago, was Stan, who was really considering moving to Michigan. We stepped in, and we did everything we could to convince them to stay, and they did. Now, was that a bluff? I'll never know, but I know that they were dead serious, and they were in the second round of talks with Michigan to leave Connersville. And they've added about two-hundred-and-twenty jobs since that time. Stan's is really a success story that fell out of that whole retention effort and an expansion that was kind of on the bubble, would it stay or would it go somewhere else?
If I, if I can, you allow me to elaborate there. These companies have, have an obligation to their stockholders, and it's not necessarily like it was fifty years ago when most of our factories were owned by men and women who lived locally. The, the other thing is that we're in extreme competition. Like, like he said, there are at least thirty-six hundred other counties or governmental entities that are vying for business, and you have to be there the fastest with the most of them. And for a lot of them, they, they want some kind of, I don't know if you want to use the term good faith, but they want, they want a good faith example of what you're willing to do to keep them, be that money, or land, or tax incentives, or whatever. And it's never, it's never a black and white thing. There's no problem on page two, and this book has the solution to that problem on page four. It doesn't work that way. You're, you're dealing with people, and we simply aren't mind readers. And, and I understand people, and that's one reason I'm trying to bring this out, is because the people don't understand, they don't understand why things are kept quiet, so kept secret. Here's the reason why. If I own a factory employing a hundred people, and I'm thinking about moving my, my factory to Timbuktu, I've got a hundred angry employees that are, may lose their jobs. I have their families, I have the local government, I have everything like that. So, they, they want these, these negotiations to come here, to be kept secret. And in the, actually, the law does allow, even the open door law does allow for trade negotiations and certain types of this to be, to be kept secret until, until the paper is signed. After that, and until things can be offered, but when, once a tax incentive or whatever, it needs to require the approval of the appropriate government body. So, that's why things are done. And it's, it's very difficult, it's tough, it's tough competition, and I'm by no means an expert, but I just want everybody to understand why things are done like that, and we can go forward.
I would have to add to that just a little bit. You were talking earlier about retaining the younger generation to stay in Fayette County and not leave here to go for other jobs, I guess is the way you put it, you know, as far as. And your younger generation that is here in Connersville that go off to college and leave and don't come back, that's our future. Even though we have bigger businesses here in town, your small, your small businesses are just the same. They're the lifeblood of, so you have to pay attention to both, because if you make your small business grow, your community grows. And Dan, I think you've hit that on every front, so...
Well, I, I tell you, I, I want to correct something. I said thirty-six hundred. It's actually thirty-one-hundred-and-forty-three counties and/or equivalent, accounts, boroughs, parishes, and so forth. So, I think that the thirty-six number is the EDC's Economic Development Corps throughout the United States. So, I did, somebody will fact-check me on, they'll watch this on the Channel Three, and I'll be, I'll be in trouble, and I don't want to be in any more trouble than I already am. So, at any rate, thank you, Commissioners, for supporting economic development in Fayette County. You, you are kind of the backbone of us right at the moment. The county is the biggest supporter of economic development in every, on every front. And we, I can speak for our board, and me especially, from the bottom of our hearts, we appreciate all that you're doing to keep us going. Truly appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
WTH. And again, I apologize, I look right for me.
Let's get somebody else's name. It's all right. Good morning. My name is Ann Yoka, and I do work for WTH. We are a technology company, and today I have the CEO and owner of WTH here with me, Rex Jones. He's going to help me when I fall and I can't get up. So, first of all, I want to thank you for being a great support for our WTH. Fayette County has been a WTH loyal supporter for, I think, close to ten years. You've had, we have parcels, we have, which is land information in your county, we have the 911, the sheriff's office, which is your public safety EMA, your EMS, and we also have your infrastructure, which is your highway department, using our GIS map. Using our map, everyone has been trained efficiently on how to use it, and have given the control to them so that they can do this. But there were, and these are on licenses that they purchased, purchased from WTH. But we also have something that is called the Web GIS. The Web GIS is on the cloud, is on a public field, so that anyone at home, you have paid for those at home who would like to go on the map and see different layers that were created, those are brought forward on the web so everyone can see them. In 2015, you discontinued our Web GIS and brought in Beacon. We weren't for sure why, why you did that, and we thought everyone was happy with this. I know Kathy in the assessor's office used it faithfully, and all the other offices. We're here today to ask you to bring us back as your Web GIS as well. I don't know what your plans are for keeping both or having one, but I know that when we put in your Web GIS, and that was in 2009, we did not charge you at all for a setup fee. We charged the price of thirty-six hundred dollars, and Beacon, when they came in, knew that they couldn't compete, so they lowered their price to what we were paying. So, I believe they were on a contract that was for three years, if I'm correct, and I know the contract is due next year. So, I'm asking the support and the Commissioners if they would allow us to, once again, come in. In fact, we've left your site up, our WTH site up at no charge, all this time, so people could see it. So, if there was any way or any questions, I can answer from me on this.
I can get this, I don't, I don't, we did change, I remember that.
No, we didn't.
No, we didn't. Yeah, you're right, we did.
We had something in there.
Right, that's right. Yeah, I guess you can expand on that.
Well, I, I made the motion, Ms. Yoka and I spoke a couple of weeks ago in the auditor's office, and it was before I was county president, we made the motion to include Beacon as a supplement, supplementary service. There was no, no motion made to discontinue our business with you. Now, if in the meantime, your, your contract has expired or something like that, to, I don't think it was brought to our attention, as I, as I told you that, that day in the office, and, and the auditor pulled up the minutes from that meeting, and it supported what I said, there was never any intention to not have your, your service.
The clerk, or, excuse me, the auditor at that time, Deborah Kidshaw, did I say her name right there?
Yes.
She sent an email to Steve Leatherman, one of our attorneys in the office, and said that at this point in time, I think it was in October, believe it or not, that they would be discontinuing our service. I did not bring the email with me, but I can sure get that to you.
Well, there, there was some...
So, some confusion, it sounds like.
There was some confusion about, there was some confusion about the fact that we were paying two businesses for the same service. But again, when Mr. Harrison made his presentation for Beacon, okay, what he told us is that, that his, his company provided, and I really don't remember the exact wording, okay, his company provided some access that yours did not, or it was a little more refined or something of that nature. And quite frankly, the idea was that Mr. Harrison was a hometown, hometown boy, okay, and we were just going to include him along with you in, in providing a reasonable service. However, this has become an issue as of late, so when, when did you say that you received the letter terminating the services?
I believe it was in October of 2015. I, I know Jane looked it up when we were in the auditor's office the other day, and she found it. And I could be wrong on the month, but I, I do remember seeing that Steve does have it back in the office, and so does Beverly, our bookkeeper. I wonder why she was confused then on that, that she would send a termination letter to us if it was supposed to be a supplement?
I don't know, I can't speak for her. She was...
I did go to, and I talked with the surveyor, and to the book planning and building Commissioner, and to some, all of the offices, and asked them what they thought. And the surveyor and the planning and zoning does not use our online map on the cloud, they use what is in the, on their desktop. They do use those. But I know in Kathy's office and some of the others, you're the only one that has the desktop version, the rest of them would use the online Web GIS. So, now, I guess I'm, I'm just wondering what would be our next step? Would you have to have another contract to be signed again, another proposal?
That's a sixty-four thousand dollar question.
There you go. I've got time.
What I'm going to recommend is that we pull both your former contract and the existing one with Beacon, that we, we look at it. I'll give an information packet to the two of you, and we can make a decision at our next meeting. Or, to be fair to you, if, if our next meeting doesn't, isn't convenient for you, we'll, we'll make a determination at a meeting that you can attend. That's strictly up to you.
Okay. That would be fine with me.
Our next meeting will be, the first meeting in August, so it will be August the 2nd. And we start at 9:00 A.M.
That's on a Tuesday again?
Yes. We meet the first and the third Tuesdays.
Okay.
Is that convenient for you?
I'll have to go home and look at my calendar.
Okay.
That's okay. If not, I will call right away Jane and find out when I can make it if I'm not out of town working.
Jane, Jane can give you my cell phone number if you want to call me, okay?
Right.
And by the way, we'll, we'll get you on the agenda and we'll make a decision.
Great. And we really thank you for your business. We do, WTH has been a part of Fayette County for almost ten years, and we want to still continue to be a part of it, even on the Web GIS with the public. And I, I know Kathy has been talking to me about, can you add this to the Web GIS, or could you put this field in there? And so, I'm working now with the treasurer and some of the other fields, and I know even Mike has said something that he'd like to see that is on Beacon, that would be on our, our site, and so I'm taking it back to our programmers to see if they can do that.
I would like to say something, because in the three and a half years I've been here, I've ran into this issue, oh, at least a dozen, over a dozen times. And I have to tell the public, so I want it on record, the GIS mapping is not for surveying purposes, okay? I've ran into that, I've had people calling me, hey, that's so-and-so's land, it says, it says it right at the bottom of the page.
There's a disclaimer.
So, there is a disclaimer, and, you know, you get in turf wars of who owns what property, and it can get, it can get ugly. So, I just want to let the public know that, that is not for surveying purposes.
Perfect. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Patrician serves. Anyone from the public wish to speak? I like Mary to speak now, forever hold your peace. Let's digress here for a moment. Mr. Coram?
See, that's all I had. Someone in the thanks.
Go ahead and make the presentation, please.
Okay. Can we start on the bush hole?
Please.
Okay. Well, we've been looking to try to get it to new bush hole. We've been down, I don't know how many times with the one we got, it's wore out, can't hardly keep blades on it. Yeah.
Yeah, I saw him jump.
Yeah. I like to deal with kilos up there north of town, they're a lot cheaper, and it's the same mower is what we've been checking on. same mower is what we've been checking on. I've checked with Zimmer's, Kellogg's, and John Deere. Big price difference in, especially with John Deere and Zimmer's. Zimmer's asking 12.5 for what we're needing, and John Deere's 20, was 24, and Kellogg's 29, so.
That's a big difference.
Yeah. We've dealt with Kellogg's over the years, they've been pretty good to us. So I'd just like to ask, see if we, we've got the money in the line, I'd implore that, but I'd like to have permission to see if we can get that through one of our mowers.
I just, I just want to make sure we're comparing apples to apples. The three that you brought here, okay, the one, especially one from John Deere, and one from Kellogg's, they're, they're comparable in quality, and capability, size?
They have two different ones up there, Kellogg's, the Bush Hog brand is a lot tougher and a lot sturdier than the Woods bank, Woods is a brand, there's probably a couple thousand, or about $1,000 difference in the Woods, and then there is with the Bush Hog, but the Woods would not last long enough on doing road mowing, day in, day out, so that's why we went with the Bush Hog.
Is this the one you're talking about, that you like the most?
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is...
And it's a bat wing, we can go a little bit wider than what we had before.
I should quote, I should note that we usually take three quotes, however, one company has not gotten it back in time, so...
It was all over the phone, and they were supposed to send it to me yesterday, and they never sent it. I called them again this morning, and I still didn't receive it between now and then, then and now.
And your current, your current Bush Hog is down?
Yes.
So...
We're behind at the moment on mowing roadside.
Okay.
So what is this company? This is...
That's Kellogg's.
Kellogg?
North of town.
Gotcha. The, the, this is actually Bush Hog. Okay. So you would need a motion to approve the purchase of Bush Hog from Kellogg?
Mm-hmm.
For $9,000?
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and second, to accept the quote for the Bush Hog rotary cutter equipment from Kellogg's, and the price is $9,000 even. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Go buy your toy.
That was easy.
Yeah. Out and out, we've been chip sealing, we've got the 22 miles done, we've got two more miles to go, and we're done. We're done with District Two, District Two and District One, we're finishing up in District Three now. Been putting colwards in, whenever the rain comes in, we're, we can't do any chip sealing, we've been putting colwards in, been, so. And my truck's down right now, which will have been going for long.
Did you get my email on the...
We took care of that yesterday.
Good man, thank you, I appreciate that.
Before you jump off, public announcement to the public, when they chip seal the county roads, you need to be extra careful, this stuff gets slippery. I mean, it causes accidents all the time, and it's not that it has to be done, but just take extra caution when you're driving, don't take turns like you normally would.
Yeah, we put fresh oil signs out the day we do it, and we usually try to keep them on there at least three or four days, just to give everybody the heads up on new stone anyways.
Kind of like putting up a speed limit sign.
Yeah.
It's a suggestion.
Did you see that back there? That bill. That's it.
Anything else?
That's it.
We gave you $9,000, she should be happy.
Yeah.
Okay?
Appreciate it.
Thanks, sir, appreciate it.
Yeah.
Miss Knopf?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I, I accidentally missed it, please, come on up and speak with us.
How's everyone doing?
Great.
Good. My name is Ray with Liberty National, it's nice to see everyone. I heard that there were some concerns about the open enrollment that is about to happen soon with Liberty National, so I just wanted to come and find out what's going on.
They're, they're not concerns, so to speak, the problem is that we have so many 24-hour services, the jail, community corrections, 911, that if they bring a third shift employee in to talk about enrollment, they have to pay them overtime. And that's, that's the, that's the biggest complaint I've heard from community corrections and some of the others.
I see.
So that's, that's, that's the problem.
Okay.
Okay. Now, I, I have your insurance, so, and I'm very pleased with it, but, but that's, and it does, we're, we're in financial straits right now, and we just can't do that, so is there a way around that?
Absolutely, absolutely, and what we would prefer to do is actually come in during third shift time, take about five, 10 minutes, speak with those individuals briefly, just to check on them, and then go on about our way, so.
But, but again, the problem is, not everybody that's working third shift today will be there when you were there, so you're going to miss some.
Yeah, and we don't mind, we normally come to Fayette County and do open enrollment for about two weeks, so we catch people at the perfect times, and you know, especially with Mr. Buzorah, last time, we finally caught you, but if you just got to catch them at the right times, it's best for the employees to not waste anybody's payroll time, or anything like that. And we do service 37 counties, and that's how it's worked out for most counties, so we just schedule different times throughout the week where we'll be there, so we can talk to everybody, and everyone has the same opportunity. And I also wanted to let you know that now we have just over a million dollars in no cost life insurance, in the accidental death life insurance that we provide for all the county employees, which we're really excited about.
Cool. For each employee?
Yeah, for each employee that we get to see. So a lot of the third shift employees, we haven't gotten a chance to even see them face to face to sign them up for that. We would really like an opportunity to do so.
And when would you start this open enrollment plan?
You are open between July and August, so I tried to schedule one for last week with the department heads, but that had been canceled because there were some misorders.
Can I speak as a department head?
Please.
Everyone in my office is very frustrated, because they've already been here once this year, so this is the second time this year, and we are forced to meet with them, whether we want to or not. I mean, I can tell you right off, I have no interest in their insurance, and I resented that interruption to my, not only my work time, but my employees' work time. So nothing personally, it's too...
Yeah, of course.
But just, you know, I mean, a lot of the offices, we're busy, and I don't have time, I feel like, to waste talking to someone about something that I'm not interested in, and to be told that we have to meet with them, that I have to allow each of my employees, I mean, maybe it's only 10 or 15 minutes, but 15 minutes, five employees, that's over an hour of work time that we lost, for no, no useful purpose in my mind. And I can't speak on behalf of the other office heads, I mean, Kathy's here, maybe she could say how she feels, but I know that was, we got so many complaints from other department heads.
Well, I guess my question is, why can't it be selective?
Yeah, I didn't know that. The company said it had to be, it was all or nothing.
No, I, I apologize about that, I'm not sure who said that.
I can't hear you.
I apologize about that, I'm not sure, maybe it was Sean that came by that said that.
All of the gentlemen that were here last time, because we were at a very busy time when they were here, and we told them we didn't have time, and I basically had one guy sit and talk to them while I ignored him at work, just so he would write my name down, that he would know with me.
Oh, my.
I mean, that is just...
My business. Well, I'm really glad you brought that to my attention, so...
So we've already had one enrollment period this year?
Yeah, it was back in late February, March, I believe. Yeah, you're open twice a year, and the reason why we do that, or why we started doing that, is because we didn't want an employee to go a whole year and not be insured, if they needed some insurance. And it's certainly not mandatory, we do ask that they sign a waiver, if they're waiving that no cost policy, to protect the liability of the county, because you do typically have to offer employee benefits to every employee at equal opportunity. So all they can do is sign a sheet at the bottom saying, I decline this no cost offer that has been negotiated by the county to receive that $3,000 per employee.
I'm not arguing with you, but more than one of your representatives told us that we had to listen to their spiel, before they would allow us to sign that waiver, more than one.
Right.
I mean, I personally had to listen to the spiel before they signed the waiver.
Nor, I'm not going to speak for, I'm just going to give my two sentences, in the fact that if a department head is told in the courthouse, or any other department, therefore, that they have to listen, I'll be quite honest with you, I would direct them to call a county commissioner, one of us is going to show up, and go, not going to happen.
Right, that's not, that's not, that's not okay, we're a voluntary option, you know?
It's a no-go. I mean, they can sign the waiver and be on their way, and it's done, they don't need to hear the sales pitch.
Mrs. Dowd, do we have other, I think I've also heard a complaint, we have other companies that require the same thing, am I correct?
I have not dealt with another company yet that's had open enrollment.
Okay. So if it were to happen again, that's the course it would have to happen, I might have all one of us, or whoever said, let's say.
Well, I guess, I guess the question is, well, they're saying that for Liberty Mutual to continue, their procedures are that they have to have two enrollment periods a year, correct? And the question is, how invasive is that versus loss production, the aggravation, balance that out with the product that they're offering?
And I understand what you're saying, you have to, by federal law, you have to be an equal opportunity insurance.
Right.
You have to offer it to everybody, if you miss somebody, then you're in legality, I understand that. But it comes right down to, hey, do you want the insurance? Nope, I don't, we'll sign right here.
Right, it needs to be like that, yeah. I agree with you. And I take responsibility for that, because that was my team that was here, so I apologize. I wouldn't like that so much either.
Um, you and I meet with her. I think what we'll do for right now, we're not going to make a decision, we'd rather sit down and talk to you privately, okay? What would be, what would be a good time to sit down with you?
I can make the time, so, I know there's three of you.
Well, you would only be meeting with me and maybe one other.
Okay.
Would 10 o'clock next Tuesday morning be convenient, the 26th?
26, at 10 o'clock?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, I can hear.
Okay.
Frank, I will not be able to be there, but if you need any information from anyone in my office, they will all be, willing, this year.
It's not right here.
Oh, thanks.
Okay, 10 o'clock, if you would just come in to the auditor's office and ask for one of us...
Okay.
Excuse me, ask for me, well, we'll take you back to the office, and we'll discuss this.
Sounds good.
Okay?
Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Nice to see you, Jane.
You too.
Any other business we brought for the commissioners? If not, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of claims and payroll.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the payroll and claims, is there any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. No other business to come before the board? Media? Okay, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for adjournment, is there any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, we are adjourned.